Good evening. We have some special guests here who's wearing gold and blue and we'd like to ask them if they would come up to the front and lead us in the flag of the leeches. And if everyone would please stand in a minute.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guyan Valley Wildcats, huh? Anybody, any of you guys go to West Hamlin Elementary? Well, I was reading the paper where you guys had one of the best schools in the county, maybe the state's.
Nah, mine's in San.
Yeah. So, congratulations. Thank you for doing the pledge.
This session with the Lincoln County Commission on June the seventh, two thousand twelve at six p.m. now called de ordre. Members present is Merle G. Clark, Charles McCann President, Charles Vance Commissioner, Thomas Ramy Jr. Commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to second it to the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on May the seventeenth, two thousand twelve at ten a.m.
So, motion second.
Motion second, be all yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda was a hearing on the estates of Jack and Ruby Cooper, awaiting on attorney Joe Stevens. So, we're gonna go on down and go to Donna Gerald with Special Olympics.
Donna's welcome. You can come up front if you want, or pull the podium out, just whatever situation you.
Whatever you want me to do, Charles, I'll do it.
You just go right there.
I'll sit right here. Okay, first of all, thank you for, for letting me come and speak to you. I'm gonna talk on Special Olympics, you all, and I brought some pictures and I just grabbed an old album if you guys would like to see what we're, what we do. And we've done it for thirty-plus years. And I brought pictures of each team that we have, what sports we, we compete in and stuff. And also brought a, uh, one of our brochures when we go to summer games and we go to four state games. What we do, um, of course, I'm Donna Gerald and I've been with Lincoln County School since, for twenty-five years or so. But I was a volunteer way before that because I have a daughter down there. Special Olympics has been part of the school system for that long. Um, as of last year, the school system has, through what reasoning, I do not know, misunderstanding or what have you or whatnot, but they chose not to support Special Olympics anymore, which broke my heart. So, a couple of us, Tracy Beltrum, also has a child. We've decided that we're gonna continue Special Olympics through Lincoln County because Lincoln County is one of the favorite counties in the state of West Virginia when it comes to Special Olympics. We're asked to do everything. Uh, we've had two compete in the Nationals, we went to Iowa for fourteen days. And Unis Rival put medals on my daughter, which was, was that, uh, was absolutely wonderful. Uh, we compete in, uh, bocce, uh, that's kinda like yard bowling, uh, football, basketball, cheerleading. My team, my basketball teams have played on Western University floor and won, brought home gold just about every year. Um, we go to summer camp, uh, that's in August. And we do various things and through all this, and my kids you'll see are dressed in uniform, they have little duffel bags, they have their bowling balls. Whatever our kids need, we provide that free of charge because we're nonprofit. I've raised all the money over the years, some of you might know what I've done, but, um, we've raised money. The school system gave us support through, uh, the last five years or so. Doug, our director, uh, paid our tuition fee for us to go to state games and we go four year, four times a year to Parkersburg, uh, Morgantown, Snowshoe for winter games. And in Charleston, now it used to be at Marshall for summer games. And we usually take twenty-eight, thirty kids and they're, and at no cost to them. We raise the money to su- to support that. Uh, and last year, or year before last, not last year because we didn't do it, when Dana Snyder took over, he, uh, provided buses for us. That's the first time, we've always had to rent vans, uh, and what we've provided, food, clothing, what, whatever the athletes needed. We, transportation, we go get them, we bring them to practice, we take them home, we feed them. Because parents are not really involved, um, and support our kids, uh, like regular basketball and football parents are, they're really involved. Um, and for us to continue to do that, we have to, in order, we have to do that. And everybody says, well, the parents need to really talk to the board. Well, the parents don't talk to the board. But anyway, uh, whether we have support with the Board of Educat- or with the board or not, we're gonna continue and we're gonna target, um, the, the athletes that have already graduated school. Uh, because especially when this goes from, well, you have to be eight to participate on a, on a state games, uh, but you can, hundred years old, hundred and ten, however old you are, it's, it's a lifetime thing. And for you to be on stage, you have to be eight. But now we do county games too, although we didn't do county games this year, the, the board decided they would do spring games or whatever, we had nothing to do with that. But anyway, I'd like to have your support, uh, some way, somehow, because these are Lincoln County kids. These kids, and they represent Lincoln County really proud. I mean, and not only is it sports oriented and we provide that sports, um, activity that they normally wouldn't get to do in the schools because they're just, they're just not on the same plane level. Um, it's educational, we take them to different places, we've taken them to candy factories, we've taken to the fishing, uh, hatchery thing, we've taken them to, uh, whatever. We take them to the movies, we take them, um, out and by, and once again, let me interject here, they, it's nothing, no cost to them whatsoever. Uh, we've had kids that's never ate at McDonald's before, when we first started. Uh, we've had kids that, we went to Charleston, didn't know what a parking garage was. We educate these kids and ex- and, and, and they get to meet and, uh, communicate with people that they would never get to do if we didn't do Special Olympics. So, I think it's a very, 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 very important thing for Lincoln County.
So, in your job, you don't have to do that.
No, it's volunteer.
You agree to do it because you want to help.
Yeah, because, because, um, we expose these kids to so much. Now, it's, I don't, I have never received a penny for doing it. It's knocked out of thirty, uh, well, my daughter's thirty-eight and probably thirty years, thirty-plus years. Uh, and even if my daughter wasn't down in San Antonio, wasn't, didn't compete or have such interest in this, I would still do it because that's where my heart's at. Um, so, if you wanna look at our pictures, you can, um, and if you wanna help us, I'd greatly appreciate it.
And put it up your finger.
Okay.
Has the Board of Education given a reason why they couldn't support?
Last year, when, when the powers to be changed, um, I, we had a girl, they hired a girl and, um, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm hard through the Board of Education, um, but I'm.
Don't say anything to get you fired.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm hard through the Board of Education, but, uh, I'm not a teacher. So, I don't have the degree that they were looking for to be the, the, uh, the Director of Special Olympics. So, they hired a girl to do that, had no background in special ed, had no background in knowing what we were doing, she didn't know what to do. We tried to help her, but it was just, it was a bad year. So, she complained about Dana, she complained about me, to the superintendent and the superintendent meeting with her, never once did they, they asked me my opinion and what we do with our, with our Special Olympics, uh, what we do, what it means. Uh, so, they called, and she even called the State Department and said that she couldn't work with me, that, uh, we didn't allow her to do her job or whatever, but the state came down. And honestly, because I was not involved in any of the meetings, I felt like it was two, um, two females in the same room wanting to be top dog. And they never did get on the same page, never did get on the same page. They didn't, one was saying this and then the other one said, well, if I can't be in charge and tell them what to do, then we're not gonna support it. So, that's where, that's where that ended up. Um, and I just feel like it was really, nobody was on the same page and, uh, they may come back, I don't know, um, to support us. But when they say support, what the support was, was allowing me, on my job, to go into the school systems and get participants. Uh, and now I'm not allowed to do that, I'm not allowed to go on school property, I'm not allowed to, um, practice the kids at school or anything. So, it has to be outside of school, it has to be outside of my work day. Well, I have a family and lots of everything and it just helped us get the kids, to get the athletes and to promote this all over. But we're gonna do it if it's, if I have to. But it's gonna be hard for me in the evenings to travel to Harts to pick up a student and then practice and then take them back. It's just gonna be real hard on me. So, uh, I need money, I need some finances to help you do this. Because we're nonprofit and we have no money, every penny, you can look at our uniforms, they're dressed, um, really, really good, you can look. And, and the letters in there, each one of you get a copy of the letter and our, uh, budget for, um, yeah, I should've gave that to you, start with, there's a budget there that we try to stay within. Uh, sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. Um, but, but once again, I interject here, the kids absolutely have nothing in this, we, they pay for nothing. So.
Well, you know, I've observed, some of it down through time, and always thought, in addition to all of the things you said, it's also like a social.
It's a social.
Of being formed, seeing, you know, they, they interact with one another a lot.
We have little dances outside of the, um, the sports itself and the medals and, and all that competing. The big, the big thing on these babies' minds is the dance. And they, we've had seventy-eight-year-old men come in their little leisure suits with patent leather shoes. I mean, when you come to a dance, they dance and, and it's more of us, and they meet kids lifelong friends. I've got, my daughter has friends all over the state of West Virginia and, and Unis Rival, I mean, Unis Rival hugged my daughter often, but, I mean, what was the chances of that? And, um, um, if the, if we don't have the finances, we can't do a whole lot. And, uh, uh, the county games, I probably won't be able to do those again unless the schools, the school, the Board of Education does support that because that's, that entails going into the schools and things. So, but we will compete in the four state games, so. And we provide their bowling balls, they're, I mean, they're dressed. And usually if, if the Board of Directors of Special Olympics on the state level, and we have, and what it is, we have to abide by their rules, we're under the umbrella of, of Special Olympics. The county gives us support by allowing us, allowing me to do my job, allowing me to do, have, to do Special Olympics and to go into the schools and things like that. That's where I need the, the county's support. Uh, but we are, we are under the, the Special Olympic rule, under the umbrella of the, of the national Special Olympic rules. And, uh, we kinda have to do what they tell us, but it's not like they tell us every day. They tell us, okay, you're in charge, go to your county, adapt what we do to your county. And we, and, um, we're involved in, in all kinds of fundraisers, I've done the polar plunge, you all might have known, heard about the polar plunge. Uh, raised money and February's snowball was that big, you know, jumped in the ice water to raise money for these kids. That's how, how, I, uh, I just think Special Olympics is so worthy and it needs to continue, whether in the school system. But, you know, and, and the athletes, like I say, are from eight on the state level to lifetime, and, and, you know, anybody can compete. And they're all treated just as equal and they all, if you've never been to a state Special Olympic tournament, it'll break your heart. But it'll also make you smile deep inside what these kids can accomplish. And we all think we put limitations on them and every time you say, well, they're not gonna be able to do this or not, you know, the year that we went, the first time we ever won gold on the Western University floor, we thought we'd be so nervous because we was playing on that floor and everything, we brought home gold, both teams brought home gold. So, never underestimate them, never underestimate their abilities and, and, and if nothing else, the socialization, like you said, Charles, they're, um, being able to talk to other kids and, and, and to any of them, there, there's nothing wrong with them, to them, they're just, they're just kids, so.
Do individuals know each other?
Uh, yeah, they are. And they, they pull from each other, they draw strength from each other and, you know, they call each other, they, they were just lifelong friends and, uh, they, they try to do. And I've got kids, I've coached football, basketball, you name it, I'm the coach because there's only three of us that did this for thirty years, there's been, well, for probably twenty, twenty years or twenty-five years, there's just been two, Helene Salmas.
Actually, is Helene still?
Helene is, is, but she's retired and she's gonna volunteer, but she's no longer in charge. Uh, and now Tracy Beltrum's come on board, so that's three of us. And we've done this, the three of us has done this for the last thirty years. And I've got kids in just about every county that wants to come and play for me because they think I'm the top coach, you know, they, they, but we have fun. We, I don't care about winning, that's not what we go for, we go for the socialization and exposure to our kids today.
I know you too well, you wanna win.
The winning's good, the winning's good, but that's not why I interject to my kids, I say, you know, go out and have a good time. And we teach them manners and we teach them respect, we teach them how to play the game.
Well, and that's important.
Yes, it is, very important, because, you know, you got, we've got some kids that's, uh, I had one kid tell me one time, he says, you know, I'm the meanest kid in, in Lincoln County. I'm like, who told you that? Well, his teacher had told him that, that's all he heard all his life. And I said, well, you're gonna go with me. And they, they advised me not to take him, I took him, I treated him, I gave him a job to do, he was my little helper and he was the best kid I ever took in my life. These kids have feelings, they, they know when someone i- is proud of them and when someone's with them and, and, and encourage them to do the best they can do. And the best is all I ask from my kids. You know, if they go through those fits and, you know, and I can't manage them and they're, they're not acting like they're supposed to, they don't play ball, that's just rule and they know that. So, it's, it's, especially when it's, it's a lot of things to our kids and then to their families. So, if at all possible, I ask your support.
Well, no doubt, I'm sure all three commissioners sitting here and probably one in the audience, their heart says, yeah, this, we need to support and help kids of all ages and whatever. It's just a matter of how much, uh, should we do, how much, uh, that kind of thing. And I guess, I always believe that, that our job is, as county commissioners is to, number one, is to do whatever we can to make Lincoln County better. And education has to be number one. And if we, you know, mosey along through the life, education has to be the key, whatever level that is. So, uh, it's, it's good that, uh, we have people like you that, you know, for whatever reason, willing to go beyond what the normal day as a mom or a normal day as a, as a working mom and do more. And, uh, we have people that, you know, when I looked the other day at the picture of, of West Hamlin Elementary and, and the award they got, you, you seen people who really volunteer and help and go beyond the teachers or the people who, parents who, everything. So, it's always those kind of things that, what makes things happen, it happens for the better. So, uh, my apology, and I'm sure the, the other commissioners did too. It's one of those things, um, we seem to be in that, uh, atmosphere of what can we do as a commission to help various agencies and various groups do more? And as long as we're doing more for our young people and in our county, uh, we're willing to help. Sometimes it can be enough, sometimes it's not enough. But, uh, I'm certainly one of those that's, that's help what we can and I see your budget, what, fifteen thousand?
Yeah, we try to.
At least, well, a budget's a guess.
Give or take, yeah.
Right.
Uh, and, and I appreciate, you know, um, but for Special Olympics, the support is not like it is at West Hamlin or Harts or the community. There is no community for Special Olympics. But I appreciate whatever you can do. If it's a dog, hey, it's great.
I'll start out with asking the commissioners if they would be willing to support, uh, three thousand dollars. A motion is second for about three thousand dollars for Special Olympics. All yes vote, motion carries. Just need to work with Judy and she'll figure out how to make that happen.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay, we do have our attorney here, there's Stevens here. The next thing on the agenda that we, if there was a hearing for the estates of Jack and Ruby Cooper. Tracy Norman, the petitioner, she is here. Okay, um, we received a letter, or petition for Tracy Norman on a contest of the wheels of Jack and Ruby Cooper. Uh, we have Joe Stevens, who was the one who prepared the wheel, witnessed one wheel. And Tracy Norman is the petitioner, is any of the other here, Sandra Larkin or Tammy Peppers here?
No.
Tracy, you wanna state your case, Joe?
Well, I'd like to state for the record now, I'm here behalf of Tammy Peppers, who is the duly appointed and qualified exec actress of the, of both the state.
And as I looked at the record, just to help set the record, I guess, what I got from it was that there was a, a wheel at one point and then that wheel was voided or it was a new wheel was written and basically, uh, signed, uh, what I seen was a wheel of Jack Cooper and a wheel of Ruby Cooper. Both of them basically the same wheels, signed individually. And, um, basically saying that, uh, they had decided to change their wheel and leave you out of the wheels, that's.
Correct.
And, uh, and point it, and one of the, of the two sisters as exec to be appointed anyway, they're dead. And it all, whatever happened to Jack, all his honor went to her, if he died first, which he did, I believe.
Yes, he did.
And then she dies and that, that leaves you out. Now, I guess the question that I would have is, in your letter of petition, basically was saying that when Jack prepared his second wheel, that he had dementia.
Yes.
And, and so I guess the question that came to me would be, what evidence do we have here tonight that should tell us that, that dementia was there and it was verified or certified by a doctor?
Well, um, I had contacted Gregory Chaney, M.D., because he's the one that diagnosed this. And I found a record, but, um, what had happened is he was an employee of, um, a medical office. And they purged the records. And I just found out, um, Tuesday, that they purged the records. But I do have one doctor, um, who states that he has dementia.
But at the point that he signed his will, is it?
Well, see, I'd have, I have to go back and like Saint Mary's and other doctors.
Well, and, and you can see the position we're in.
Right.
We can't rule on what.
I don't have.
Maybe, but what is real is all the, we can, I guess, what I tried to, I read the saying and tried to, you know, you know, put myself in a position. When Jack signed this, was he in sound mind, you know?
No.
Well, you say that, but.
I know.
That's all I've got.
Well, he had a stroke, um, August first, two thousand three, and that's when this started. But see, they should've kept all, all the records and they purged them.
Well, I'm sure, uh, yeah, when you started on this, I, I tried to think, well, you know, as a daughter, she was.
Well, I'm the one. I'm the one that done everything.
I understood, I read your, all your statements. And it's one of those things that, you know, I guess when I look at it, it's, it's one of those things that, if I was a family member, it certainly hurts. But, uh, at the same time, our job up here is to, what evidence is or to overturn the will that has been entered and acted upon, uh, and I can't find it.
Well, I do have affidavits where, um, people signed that they knew that I took, I was the caretaker.
Well, and I, again, I said, yeah, you know, the scale, it may be, don't bounce out, but.
Right.
The right and wrong may not bounce, bounce out of your mind. But again, uh, unless somebody can show us something, I mean, I don't mean speaking for the commission, but I did take time and study it quite a bit and trying to figure out since the last time we talked, this time, uh, what could be done. I had difficulty coming up with a way to provide any relief that you're seeking. Now, somebody else may be or leaving a later time, whatever this commission would rule, you still have a right to go to certain court if you've got all your paperwork in order or other people who might be able to provide testimony or something to that. But, uh, I guess that, uh, unless I can hear something more valid than what I've heard so far, then I don't see how we could, could do anything different than what already has taken place.
Charles?
Yes.
Would there be any way that, uh, you could, uh, postpone this for a few weeks, two or three weeks and let her go to the hospital and gather the records and, and stuff that she needs? She didn't, she didn't know exactly what she needed, now she does, and, uh, bring this back up like in two weeks?
Oh, we probably could if the commissioners willing to do that. I, I, I think it, it needs to be resolved, uh, however this may be, but it needs to be resolved on the best information we have available. Certainly don't have that tonight. And I don't know, you know, Mr. Stevens, we don't want to keep bringing him back and forth.
Right, right. She, she has, she has some medical records and she does have notedized petitions.
Um, I have a letter from Dr. Chaney also.
As you can tell, she is, uh, disabled too and she has to have a lot of care. But, uh, there is the letter from Dr. Chaney and her ordered notedized petitions, uh, because she asked.
Well, uh, again, I think that, for me, just the way I operate and am able to digest things is, I have to have these things to look at ahead of time and think about and then read them. I couldn't say here tonight and do justice to, uh, whether, I guess the question is for us as a commission is to either deny the request or to give you an extension, does that understand?
Right, I just found out two days ago. You know, that I had to go another route.
Right, I understand, yeah, I, I understand that. I believe really that, uh, that the petition that you have requested should be denied. And if you can come with more evidence, then you certainly have a right to go to circuit court, to Judge Hoops Court and, and then present the evidence. If that's incorrect, I'm sure Mr. Stevens would tell me, even though he represents someone else, but I'm not the lawyer and, uh, I just try to keep things flowing as far as information. But, uh, the other commission, you got anything to add or deny?
I, I guess my question would be, if we reverse what's in place now, or we leave it as is, it's still gonna end up in circuit court, either way. So, to me, it would seem like to go ahead and if we deny the petition today, you're gonna end up in circuit court anyway. So, it would expedite the process, you agree?
Okay, any other, anyone else?
Yeah, on, on the wheel that you helped him with, um, I don't know if it's a lifetime issue, but did you notice any problems as far as his mental faculties or anything of that nature?
Well, may I point out a couple things? First of all, this is a letter to the county commission, and under forty-one, five, five, a contest of a will has to be very specific, must set forth a ground. I want to point out that, first of all, her letter does not amount to that. It does not, in my mind, amount to a formal, um, contest of a will. Secondly, I point out to the commission that the will that's in question here is Jack, um, Cooper's will and his wife, both of which were executed in nineteen ninety-eight. And so, of course, the, based on the letter that, that Ms. Norman has sent the commission, I suppose the relevant time period of his competency will be nineteen ninety-eight. In all respects, the will is proper. Like so many wills, I have to say that I prepared, my brother, my nephew have prepared over the years. It complies with all the requirements of the statutes. This complies with all the requirements of the statute. And I think that in order for Ms. Norman to go forward, she's going to have to produce some evidence, uh, regarding his mental condition in nineteen ninety-eight and not recent. The pertinent time is whether he was common in nineteen ninety-eight now. Um, in my opinion, representing, um, the executress of the estate, uh, in a formal matter, she has not filed the appropriate documents that comply with forty-one five five, which is statute regarding contest of a will. For that reason alone, her letter should be denied and the matter should be moved on to the Circuit Court. Uh, and otherwise, if, if we got into the matter of his competency in nineteen ninety-eight, I think the commission would have to have an evidentiary hearing, but I don't think that's even before you now, based on her letter.
Well, in ninety-eight, he was competent, that was the first will that he had drawn up. The second will was what the will that's being questioned is the will that was drawn by now, which was made in two thousand and seven.
I do have the report that I spoke of earlier where, um, he had delirium with history of dementia.
Well, I, I have to say to the commission that, looking at the file, it is the will from nineteen ninety-eight that the will, that has been probated. I haven't, I'm not aware of some other will that's, uh, beyond that.
Well, we went to your office...
Office?
And you told us that the first will, where you even had it laying out in front of us, was made in nineteen ninety-eight. The second will, we have a copy of, was made in two thousand and seven.
As far as I know, um, the estate hasn't even been run in the paper. At the, at the graveyard, um, there's a little plaque and, uh, they got the date of my mother's birth, I mean, death row.
Her sister didn't have the decency to give, give her, her mother, their mother, a decent funeral.
They cremated it.
They sent her to be incinerated and didn't care about the one picking her ashes up. And we got a phone call that, that, uh, she did, that come and pick the ashes up when Tammy, the executioner of the will, was supposed to take care of everything.
Well, yeah, I read all that in, in the...
I mean, my mother wasn't involved for two days because Tammy wouldn't call him back.
Well, that's not what we're here for, although it is, although it's an issue in the family. But I don't believe that it's at this point that the commission can do anything except more ask for a motion to reject the letter and petition. As, as you requested, I just don't think we can do anything else at this time.
And we go to the Circuit Court now?
Go to Circuit Court, yes.
Circuit Court.
Before you go, you need to...
My, my medical records.
So do we have a motion to reject the petition? So, I'll say, yeah, motion second, all yes, motion carries, and anything we can do to help with it, give it to Judy, we'll provide a, and we'll provide the records.
I, I thank you a bunch. We, we don't know nothing about what we're doing and, uh, you, you helped us out a bunch.
Well, and we'll, we can try to advise, give us all duty and all we, and we'll do the best we can.
We appreciate it very much.
The will is two thousand and eight.
The officer, I don't have my files, any previous scheduling problem. Yeah, they were...
The next thing on the agenda is Mike Claye, excuse me.
Zack Brown.
Thank you.
Zack Brown, thank you, take care.
Zack Brown, he was preaching to the big hearts of the...
Thank you very much.
Zack is our new, at least, tonight, maybe always is a new employee at region two. He's here to work with us on our projects.
What I have here tonight is, um, Leaking County Commission has a couple of projects, um, that Region Two is administering. I have a couple of requests for reimbursement tonight to need sign with the commission. Uh, one is for the Big Hertz Water Project and, uh, the reimbursement is for engineering work done so far in the project. And also there is a ten-mile creek water line project in which Region Two has been looking for reimbursement for administrative work done.
What are those amounts? Do you have those?
Sure. For the Big Hertz Water, uh, the amount is one hundred and ten thousand dollars and that'll go to reimburse Yale Robinson for their engineering work.
Is that drawdown number one?
That is drawdown number one, yes. And for the ten-mile water project, it is drawdown number eight and the amount is one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. And I have invoices to back up for both the amounts.
Okay, you've heard the request, Mr. Brown, Region Two, on the two drawdowns, have a motion to approve those?
So, second.
A motion and second, then all yes, motion carries, we'll bring those up real soon.
It's not there, it's a pleasure for the Big Hertz Project, uh, the first budget they did.
We will need to make a separate motion on that.
I'm sorry.
What did they have to change?
It's, um, when they were granted the money from the governor, um, you were granted a full amount of one point five million, but he only made five hundred thousand immediately available.
Right.
So the budget, first person needs to do the budget, actually put in the entire one point five. This one just corrects it to show that the current five hundred thousand is available immediately.
Okay, you've heard the discussion on the budget change, uh, need a motion to make that change in the budget from one point five to...
Circuit one.
Motion second, all yes, motion carries.
And I will need to call this, all yes.
Now, was that, was that change on which project?
The Big Hertz.
One point five sounded better.
You're still getting it.
Now, what did you do before you went to Region Two?
I actually worked for the Union Development Office, so I was actually on the funding end, now I'm actually giving local and nutrition.
That's where the money goes now.
Yeah.
I know you're new, but do you have any, completion, anything new on the ten-mile one that might be?